Hello and welcome. My name is Forrest Longman and I'm the current president of City Club. The mission of City Club is to inform, connect, and engage our community to strengthen the civic health of our region. We emphasize civil conversations and listening to others. On October 27th, our program will take a look at Washington's new law enforcement reforms and ask, did we get it right yet? Our speakers will be State Senator Jamie Peterson, who is the Chair of the Senate Law and Justice Committee, Steve Strawn, the Executive Director of the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs, Councilmember Nicholas Lewis of the Lummi Indian Business Council, and Jessica Shook, the President of the Washington Association of Designated Crisis Responders. This panel of experts will discuss the law's intents and content, and how the laws are being implemented, and what, if any, changes they would like to see. As always, I'd like to thank all of our volunteers who make our program possible. I'd also like to thank KMRE Radio Board Member Robert Clark, who is producing today's program, and BTB10, who will be broadcasting it for their viewers. I'd also like to thank our sponsors for their support. They are Larson Gross, Lummi Commercial Company, Danny Neal of Mulliyat Group, the Opportunity Council, Pacific Continental Realty, Unity Care Northwest, Village Books, Western Washington University, Wacom Community College, the Wacom Community Foundation, and Bruce and Claudia Dezent. We appreciate our sponsors greatly, but it's the members that make City Club. Members do help bring us great programming like Rick Steves and James Fallows. If you're not a member, or if your membership has lapsed, I'd like to encourage you to join or renew. For our current members, thank you for making this program and our community possible. Finally, I'd like to turn things over to Christine Perkins. Christine is the Executive Director of the Wacom County Library System and a member of the City Club Program Committee. She'll introduce the candidates and moderate today's program. Christine?
Thank you, Forrest. We've got a really tight schedule today, so I'm going to jump right in. Today, we will hear from candidates from the two contested races for Bellingham City Council. We will begin with the candidates from the Ward 6 position, incumbent Michael Liliquist and Eve Smaesen Marcus. Each candidate will begin with a 90-second opening statement. We will alternate which candidate goes first for each question. The candidates will have 90 seconds to answer the question. They may begin when the timer is green. When the screen turns yellow, they have 15 seconds remaining to finish their responses. When the screen turns red, they must stop. We will begin with several questions prepared by the City Club Programming Committee, and then Maureen McCarthy will field questions that you, our audience members, have submitted using the Q&amp;A feature at the bottom of your screen. We have limited time with each candidate today, so please be sure to use that Q&amp;A button to get your questions entered. Are all of our candidates clear on how the process will unfold this morning? Wonderful. Okay, then we'll get started. We're going to begin with our Ward 6 candidates in alphabetical order by last name. So, Michael Liliquist, will you please begin with your introductory statement?
Yes, thank you. I'm asking for your vote, not only because I've earned a reputation for openness, engagement, integrity, and hard work, but also because of my proven leadership produces results. With my leadership, we have invested in our community. We provided capital grants for hundreds of affordable housing units, rental assistance for hundreds of families, and established new and larger shelters and programs for those who are homeless. We've maintained our streets, enhanced public transit, and built safer sidewalks and crosswalks and bike lanes to serve our neighborhoods. We developed parks and public trails with the highest investments, going to neighborhoods with the greatest need and the greatest socioeconomic disadvantage. We've supported businesses through the pandemic, both indirectly and directly, with monetary grants to keep people working and so parents can go to work. We also aided childcare operators. We've installed solar panels, reworked our energy codes, invested in clean energy production, and adopted perhaps the most ambitious climate plan in the state. But challenges remain, and new calls to action tell us that much work is yet to be done. There's only one example. To address concerns about overpolicing social issues and criminalizing poverty, we will soon dispatch trained mental health professionals instead of police, if that's what's called for. No one is claiming victory, and my work continues. Let's move beyond confrontation division. Let's be practical but also idealistic. Let's be guided by humane values and by knowledge, experience, and understanding. I hope you will support my reelection.
Great, thank you. Now we turn to Eve Smaesen Marcus. Will you please prepare your introductory remarks?
Thank you to Bellingham City Club for hosting today's forum. It is truly an honor to be here. My name is Eve Smaesen Marcus. I use "they" or "she" pronouns, and I am running for Bellingham City Council Ward 6. As a working-class renter, musician, educator, and community organizer, over the last 13 years in Bellingham, I bring a needed perspective to City Hall. The most urgent issue of our time is the climate crisis. We cannot afford incremental change any longer. I'm committed to working with Lummi Nation, NOOKSAC Tribe, and other partners to protect and restore our water, salmon habitat, and green spaces. Bellingham can be a leader in transitioning towards renewable energy while creating union jobs and building sustainable solutions to ensure a healthy future for all generations to come. On City Council, I look forward to championing policy that makes home ownership more attainable, as well as strengthening renter protections, building permanent affordable housing, and increasing capacity of shelter and social services. We reach a future where every person, family, and child has a safe place to call home. We all benefit. In the end, we need to remember that all the challenges we face are connected, and that our fight for environmental justice is directly tied to economic housing and racial justice. My commitment to equity, intersectionality, and community health and safety is reflected in my endorsements from Washington Conservation Voters, Service Employees International, Union 1199 for Healthcare Workers, Washington Education Association, Alliance for Gun Responsibility, Planned Parenthood, Riverdust Collective, and more. I believe in a Bellingham that can lead in climate resiliency, housing affordability, economic recovery, and community well-being. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Eve. So, we are going to start our first question again with Eve Smaesen Marcus. And I'd like each candidate to expand on the biggest challenge facing the city of Bellingham and how you plan to address it. Eve?
Thank you. The biggest challenge we face is the climate crisis. The data is here. Even if we stopped using fossil fuels, the world would still continue warming for next 50 years. You know, incremental change is something we can no longer afford to follow with a climate action plan. We've only accomplished 10 of those 97 steps, and we need to work faster. We need to work swifter. And we need to work with our partners in this community, working with Lummi and NOOKSAC and the PUD and the Port in the county. We can't solve this alone. We have to work collaboratively, making sure that all of our neighborhoods have green spaces, have tree cover, making sure that we approach climate justice intersectionally, so that we're not leaving working families behind. We're not leaving our low-income neighbors behind, focusing on making the green choice the easy choice. How do we make people want to choose public transportation? How do we incorporate the needs of our different communities in working together towards building climate resiliency? Sustainable connections put together an energy audit of municipal buildings. That was something that was shelved, and I'd like to bring that back forward, which will not only create jobs, but it'll show Bellingham as a leader in retrofitting old buildings, in turning to renewable energy, and using electrification. And, you know, we don't have time to waste, so I'm ready to do the work and get us going.
Thank you. Michael Liliquist, your turn. What do you think the biggest challenge facing the city of Bellingham is, and how do you plan to address it?
Well, first of all, I agree with what Eve said, that that is one of the biggest challenges. But that's, I think, the biggest challenge for our entire city, state, country, world, is climate change. When it comes to the city, I think our biggest challenge is one of capacity to respond. With the limited resources we have, how do we rise to the challenges? We're just a city government. Our budget is large, but it's small compared to the size of the problems. Whether it's dealing with climate change or with housing, these are large issues. And so, the goal, in my mind, the challenge in my mind, is to figure out which resources we have available to us at the city and where we fall in, and then adding those resources. So, for example, to deal with the issues of housing and the shortage of mental health, I helped pass a tax which raises $3 million per year, every year going forward, to add capacity and add resources to address those problems. And so, I think that's really the best way of going about it. With regard to Eve's comments on climate change, she's right, but we are working collaboratively, and we are prioritizing green spaces in neighborhoods that are disadvantaged, and we are supporting public transit with city dollars, as well as with WTA dollars. And the energy audit, which Eve says was shelved, I think some of those good ideas were actually incorporated in current work that's ongoing, and I believe more of that good work needs to be incorporated. As Eve said, we're moving forward on about 10 of the many recommendations of the Climate Action Task Force. I think we need to move ahead on the others as well.
Thank you. Before we start our next question, I would like to remind members of the audience that you have the opportunity to ask questions yourself by using the Q&amp;A function at the bottom of your screen. Please feel free to enter those questions at any time. For our second question, we're going to start with Michael Liliquist, and the question is, what ideas do you have for dealing with the issue of chronic homelessness in our community?
I get all my best ideas from other people. I've been making sure to pay attention to the recommendations, for example, of the National Coalition in homelessness, which makes it clear that shelter is never a solution to homelessness. That shelter, to be effective, must be a conduit into housing. And so, it's a service aspect. So, housing first doesn't mean housing only. Housing first means the services are delivered, and we get people in the housing to make service delivery better. Right here at the City Club, just a couple of months ago, Paul Mangano said that "good intentions and humanitarian gestures have never ended homelessness." And as a matter of fact, they've never even reduced the numbers. We need to get smart about what we do. And there's evidence about what we should do. About 40% of the people on the waiting list are candidates for rapid rehousing. They're not chronically homeless. They've not begun the downward spiral. We need to fully fund rapid rehousing to prevent people from staying in homelessness. Another 50% of people who are on that waiting list, they have a permanent disability or a mental health condition, which means that they will need permanent supportive housing, which is expensive, but it's far less expensive in the human cost and the financial cost. So, permanent supportive housing, we need to double up on that. The problem with permanent supportive housing is operational costs. And that was one of the reasons why I supported taking advantage of House Bill 1590, which raises ongoing continuous money that we can use to pay for annual costs to support permanent supportive housing. So, I don't think we need new ideas. For me, I think we need to implement the ideas that have already been discovered by people who are working in the field.
Great, thank you. Eve Smaesen Marcus, what ideas do you have for dealing with the issue of chronic homelessness?
Thank you, yeah. You know, I agree with Michael. There are a lot of folks out there doing the good work, who are doing the research, and we can use their experiences to guide us in policy moving forward. You know, first off, we need to stop camp cleanups or sweeps. You know, if we take the resources used to sweeping folks weekly in our city, we can use that towards permanent supportive housing, towards services, towards sheltering. And while, you know, we need to be focusing on creating more housing, having more permanent supportive housing, we also need to be providing shelter while we build those long-term solutions. So, I believe we can do both, and we need to do both. You know, the city has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on sweeps, and I would love to see that. That money needs to be going towards housing. It needs to be going towards sheltering. And you know, what we really need to be doing is approaching this with compassion, with humane solutions. You know, folks who are experiencing homelessness, we don't know what their life has been. We do not know the trauma that they have experienced. We don't take into account the psychological impacts of living on the street daily, of not knowing when you're eating next, of not knowing that you're safe. You know, we need to make sure that people feel safe, which is why housing first works. But we need to incorporate it in ways that works for the people that need it. You know, and also making sure that we're supporting our social service workers, increasing the capacity for the folks who are doing that heavy lift for our community, making sure that they have good wages, have good benefits, and enticing people to come here, right? We need more services. We need more people doing the work. And I think we can do better at keeping them and bringing them to Bellingham.
Super. Okay, so our next question will come right back to Eve Smaesen Marcus. Is there movement on the city's climate action plan? Is it a priority for you? What parts do you support?
You know, there has been some movement, and I know there are a lot of ongoing projects. I think the biggest movement that I want to see is making sure that we're looking at which neighborhoods are lacking in access to green spaces, which neighborhoods are lacking in access to tree cover. With a heat wave this last summer, you know, there's a lot of data that shows that neighborhoods that don't have those green spaces, the temperatures they experience are at a much higher rate. So, you know, we need to be building those structures, that infrastructure for resiliency, mitigating negative impacts, making sure that, you know, Happy Valley has this great tree program. And I'd love to see that across the city, in all of our neighborhoods, in Birchwood, in Sunnyland, and in the neighborhoods that don't have that tree cover. You know, really moving forward on our building plan. We can lead, like, how do we expect small businesses and families to want to build with electricity to retrofit old buildings if the city isn't doing it as well? So, we have to model that behavior, and we have to incentivize folks to follow that lead. There's a lot of information out there that we have the plans. We just need to enact them. So, you know, looking at how we build in the future, how we fix old buildings is really important. And then, you know, focusing on the walkability, the rollability of our city, and making sure that people have bus routes that are only once an hour, making sure that they have, you know, we, again, we want to make the green choice the easy choice, and that's in how we build our city moving forward and how we fix what we've had in the past.
So, on to you, Michael Liliquist. Is there movement on the city's climate action plan? Is it a priority for you, and what parts do you support?
Yes, it's definitely a priority, and it's definitely movement. But I don't want to be too reassuring, because every day we hear that we need to move faster than we have been moving in the past. So, for example, one of the things we did last year is hire a climate and energy manager, specifically to move forward implementation on all the recommendations. And we did go through a prioritization process to make sure they were hitting the most important ones first. I did a similar prioritization in my own mind. I looked for the biggest savings to really move the sectors, and those are my personal priorities. So, one of those is EV charging infrastructure. One of the recommendations is to really get to zero, we need to stop driving internal combustion cars, convert to EVs. And the biggest roadblock to that is having electric vehicle charging infrastructure away from your home. So, this year, for example, we're spending $2 million. We'll be going out to grant, to, you know, contract $2 million to build 90 EV charging stations that are open to the public. So, that's movement on that front. I also believe we need to create more capacity in green power. One way I'm doing that is talking with the PUD about them becoming a utility provider for new green power that they would build, and we'd be a charter subscriber. We just authorized with a PSC to put over 1,000 solar panels on the roof of the water treatment plant. It's a very large plant, right? We're putting 1,000 pounds on it for green energy. And I think the final area has to do with phasing out fossil fuels in our buildings. And right now, we have currently already developed, can soon come to the council, and ordinance that will phase out fossil fuels in all new construction.
Okay, thank you. And Michael Liliquist, you'll be up right again with our next question. What are your thoughts on the new police reform legislation that was passed in the state legislature this year?
I think it was a really good step forward. There were actually at least a dozen bills. And at my initiative, the city council actually signed on officially to support one of those, which had to do with disaccreditation of police officers who've been found in violation of use of force policies. It shocked me when I discovered that you could be let go for abusing force, and you wouldn't lose your accreditation as a police officer. Well, that's now changed, and I help advocate for that law. There's also been some unfortunate politicization around some of the reforms, particularly HB 1310. People going around saying that this prevents police officers from responding to calls. The police aren't coming to your calls anymore. Well, that's just a political lie, and it's really unfortunate. The Attorney General's Office actually had to issue an opinion, which basically said, "police officers can still go to calls, even when there's no crime, even if it's a welfare check." The police are allowed to go there. What the new law says is, when they're there, they should use minimal force necessary. And sometimes, if no force is required, and there's no need for a police officer to be there, they should consider leaving. I think those are good reforms. There are other reforms, and I think in general, we did a good job. I think that one of the bigger problems has to do with the national level. I just heard that Congress, basically, the deal for police reforms at a national level, to make sure there's not problems in other communities, that that fell through. One of the important things to realize is there was a campaign called "He Can't Wait" of police reforms, and Bellingham already did seven of the eight, and as of this year, it'll be eight of it.
Thank you. Eve Smaesen Marcus, what are your thoughts on the new police reform legislation that passed in the state legislature this year?
It was really great to see that legislature pass this year, and I think that, you know, what's really important is that we make sure that that is being implemented in our community here in Bellingham. So, working with local law enforcement, there's been a lot of pushback. You know, I've heard from folks in the mental health services, social service workers, that police have stopped responding to calls, and that's unacceptable. So, really holding our police to that higher standard, that they need to be part of this community and work with each other to make sure everyone feels safe and welcome. You know, seeing the bills that prohibit, you know, excessive force, making sure that we're really looking at who our police are and who we're hiring, and making sure that they're not, you know, hurting folks in our community, that they're not making people feel unsafe. I think what really needs to happen, though, is to make sure that those bills are being implemented, is talking with our community, making sure that there's transparency in how our police department is working, and how we can work together moving forward to make sure that public safety is a priority. You know, and making sure that we're hiring the right people, making sure, and having more transparency in our hiring process, and looking at, you know, how the state is implementing more oversight, and how can we reflect that in our own community? I know the city's been working on a community oversight, but we need one that has power with investigation, with firing, that really makes the community trust the process and who's behind it.
Thank you. Just a reminder to our audience, if you have questions, please enter them into the Q&amp;A. We'll get to those in a moment. Now, we're going to have a question, and I believe I forgot my order correctly. We're back with Eve Smaesen Marcus. And for this question, how would you characterize the current relationship between city government and Wacom County government? What suggestions do you have for ways to partner more fully? What issues lend themselves to city or county cooperation?
Thank you. I think there needs to be more collaboration on a lot of issues. The first that comes to mind is dealing with homelessness. I think the county has depended on the city to carry a lot of that weight, and I'd like to see the county step up further in with funding, with resources, you know, working together collaboratively on solving this issue, because it's so big. You know, climate-wise, we really need to be working with our county and our PUD and Port in solving these problems. And, you know, I don't know how often the city and county really hold, like, joint sessions. I remember last winter, there was one that was called to order, but I'd like to see more of that. And I'd like to see, you know, the county, the Health Department is the county. So, how do we work more with our Health Department? How do we make sure that Bellingham residents are being served and that, you know, the work that's being done isn't repeated, so, you know, make it more efficient, making sure that it's accessible? And, you know, also, our transportation system is, you know, county-wide, and working together on, like, bus routes, how we make them more efficient, how we make them happen more often, and serving the people that need them the most. And just, I think generally, like, what I see as a pattern is siloing across the board in Bellingham and Wacom County. I think we all need to be working together. I think there needs to be more communication. I think there needs to be a huge resource list, you know, what's available, who's using it, how do we access it, and making sure that everyone in our community has access to it as well.
Thank you. Michael Liliquist, how would you characterize the current relationship between the city government and Wacom County government? What suggestions do you have for ways to partner more? Which issues lend themselves to city and county cooperation?
I think it's pretty good. It's better than it has been, but it could also be better. I want to draw attention to one of the things that Eve mentioned, which is that the county has a Health Department. They have health officials and providers, and the city doesn't. And so, we do rely heavily on the county to live in that particular area. I think the issue of housing and addressing homelessness is an important area of cooperation, and the city councils received probably four or five briefings the last two years on housing homelessness efforts that always include what the county is doing compared to what we're doing. And so, for example, because they have a Health Department, they're far more heavily involved in services and outreach to people who are homeless, and we're far more involved in the capital projects and building, for example, affordable housing, because we have the Bellingham Home Fund. So, there has been some kind of allocation of duties and some coordination, and that's critical. The new mental health response crisis system will be run through the county's 911 system. And so, the work groups have been working on developing how that will work and hiring the people. It's actually run through the county, even though it's a Bellingham pilot that originated at a request of the Bellingham City Council. So, that's a good area of cooperation, and I hope eventually there is a county-wide system of mental health crisis response. There is a mobile crisis outreach team right now, but it's really not 24/7, and it's only the county, not of the city. So, greater integration there. And finally, we're heavily integrating what we're doing with the ARPA and CARES, the COVID relief money. So, again, there's a briefing. What is the county doing? What are they spending it on? And most of the cooperation I'm referring to really is at a staff-to-staff level.
Thank you. So, I'm going to turn it over to Maureen to field a question from our audience, and we will begin with Michael Liliquist when she asks.
Good afternoon. All right, so, first question from our audience today is, "What is your position on the four parts of the People's First Initiative?" And as a reminder, those include renter protections, invasive policing, right to organize, and workers' rights.
Well, this is a great question, in part because my opponent has been a strong supporter involved in those notions. And I really want to kind of praise her and the others for addressing important issues. Unfortunately, I think the way that most of them are written, they're troubled with legal flaws or implementation flaws, or a variety of unworkable aspects of them. I have a difficulty here right now, because I've had several confidential briefings with the city's attorneys on these legal difficulties, and if any of them are passed into law and challenged in court, then the city will be positioned to defend those, and anything I say on the record is problematic. My understanding is that at least some supporters understand the weaknesses of some of the initiatives. I personally tried to craft, and for two of the initiatives, alternatives that were not legally flawed. I tried to point out to the council, this is all on record, what I thought the areas where difficulty were, and then bring forward specific recommendations on how to address those, to remove the legal vulnerabilities, to achieve the same end. That effort didn't succeed, because the city council had a truncated period of time to respond, and the majority of the council did not feel comfortable legislating on the fly, because the way it would work is we would have put an alternative proposal on the ballot that the voters would consider alongside the current initiatives. So, if I had my way, I would like to find ways to do all four of these initiatives in a way which wouldn't be problematic.
Thank you. Thank you. And Eve Smaesen Marcus, shall I repeat the question?
No, I got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's been a huge honor and pleasure to work with the folks who have put together people for Spellingham, and I think it's an amazing show of what people power can look like, and how people who want to be engaged in our government can be, and that's, I think that's really important moving forward. I am a huge proponent of these initiatives. I've been canvassing since springtime, you know, and all of the ordinances, all the initiatives that we put together are modeled after currently, current initiatives throughout, or ordinances throughout the country, found, you know, Oregon, California, New York, North Carolina, Seattle, with the renter relocation assistance, among others. And, you know, with 54% of Bellingham renting, these kind of initiatives are what we need. We need to see government policy that protects renters, that protects working class. You know, with community safety, research shows that predictive policing does not keep communities safe. With 79% of our calls being for services or non-responsive, I'm sorry, non-reportable, we don't need things that our research shows are racist. We shouldn't be having facial recognition in our system, you know. And I, just as a working-class renter, I believe in these fully. I believe in the work, and I'm really excited to see them come forward. We were only needed to collect about 66,000 signatures per initiative, and we collected over 9,000 for each initiative. And I think that really shows that Bellingham is excited for these initiatives. Bellingham is ready for progressive, pro-renter, pro-worker policy, and I'm just excited to see the vote come November for them.
All right, thank you. And take a deep breath, because we're going right back to you, Eve Smaesen Marcus. The next question is, "Do you support the rollout of 5G wireless networks throughout Bellingham and Wacom County? And how can we narrow the digital divide in our community?"
You know, I would, I would love to see us look at fiber optic for Bellingham. I want to see open access broadband to narrow that divide. If anything, the pandemic has shown us is that everyone needs access to the internet. It's not only an equity issue. It's also environmental, and our youth need it for education. So, you know, looking at how we can implement a comprehensive Dig Ones policy, making sure that we have open access, that local net-neutral providers can give to our community, that makes Bellingham money through, you know, leasing the fiber optic network. We have already seen successful models in this region with Mount Vernon, with Anna Cortis, even looking to our Lummi neighbors, you know, they're moving full steam ahead on broadband for the moving full steam ahead on uh, broadband for their community. Um, and I, I think the city's been stalling. I think we need to be moving faster and be moving more forward. And um, you know, I, I think Michael agrees with me that we need broadband, but I just, I want to see us moving faster and we already have, you know, successful models. And we, we know how to do it, right? So we have so much um, infrastructure in place. I think, you know, with creating jobs to build the rest of it and really connecting our communities, looking at where our neighbors are least resourced and starting there. And then moving to connect the rest of our community to broadband.
Okay. And over to you, Michael Illiquist. And since it's a two-parter, why don't I just quickly read it again? Do you support the rollout of 5G wireless networks throughout Bellingham and Waukesha County? And how can we narrow the digital divide in our community?
Yeah, let me handle the 5G one first. Federal law prohibits the city of Bellingham from even caring about whether or not 5G technology is vetted and safe. We are preempted by federal law specifically from worrying about the health effects of 5G. I looked into it. The studies haven't been done. The FCC has not done its job. So I have concerns. There's a giant yellow flag on 5G technology. I think the federal agencies need to do their job and they haven't. And I've been prohibited from doing mine. Digital divide. Yeah, I had been the leading voice in the city council to explore the idea of municipal broadband for several years. And it has taken a little bit too long for me to be able to convince enough people that this is an important issue. Um, even before the COVID drove home the importance of, you know, digital access for everyone. Uh, schoolchildren and people who work from home now, um, I was pushing for us to explore that even miss broadband. Look at the various models and how and where they work. And then also invite national experts to speak to the council on this. And to move this forward, I uh, championed the idea of a broadband advisory work group. And I helped write the ordinance which created that work group and that work group is now working right now on this very issue. Part of what they're doing is reviewing current public broadband efforts under the Port of Bellingham and under the Waukesha PUD. Both of those agencies have significant access to funding to roll out access to underserved rural areas. I'm just as interested in areas in the city that are underserved in a different sense, um, than whereas inequitable access or unaffordable access.
Okay, thank you. And this one's coming right back to you, Michael. Um, what are your thoughts about the city, city of Bellingham's vaccine mandate for its employees?
Oh, that's a tricky one. I wish people would really get vaccinated. It's, it's proven in scientific. Um, I'm going to have to do a slight dodge on this one too. This is a workplace bargaining issue. It is a topic of potential litigation. If it does become an issue which is brought forth as a workplace issue by our bargaining units, then that discussion necessarily has to occur with the administration. And the city council isn't, is kind of legally prohibited or advised to not get into the middle of that. So I don't feel um, free to speak on the specific workplace issues. But vaccines are proven to be as safe as just about anything in the world. Nothing is a hundred percent. Um, but this is the best thing you can do. I hope that everyone, everyone, everyone voluntarily understands uh, the wisdom of vaccination unless you have some particular medical condition that sets you apart and that could very well be the case. Um, I, please, everyone, I'm vaccinated. I hope you are too.
Thank you, Michael Illiquist and Eve Mason Marcus. Your answer to the question, what are your thoughts on the city of Bellingham uh, mandatory vaccine mandate? Excuse me, vaccine mandate for our city employees?
Thank you. You know, the city is following the lead of our state government, our national government with mandating employees to be vaccinated. Um, you know, I uh, will echo Michael, please get vaccinated. Um, you know, we've all been deeply impacted by this pandemic. Um, we've all lost people. We know people who have lost people and that was mostly preventable. Look where we are, uh, you know, um, a year and a half later and we're still in the middle of it with no end in sight. And the only way we can really move forward is making sure people are vaccinated, making sure that people are masked. Um, you know, I think it's really important to be working um, in conversation with workers. How do we make this vaccine mandate accessible? How do we make it work with your situation? You know, so having those conversations are important. I'm working with unions. But yeah, I mean, we, we're all tired of this, right? Like, I don't want to be here anymore. None of us want to be here anymore. And just like getting vaccinated is the way forward and how we can get through this. And it can be scary. There's so many resources out there. There's so many people that you can talk to. If you have questions, our health department is doing amazing work. Other healthcare providers are doing amazing work. Um, if you have questions, ask, you know, it's, it's okay to be afraid. It's okay to not know the answers, but there are people that you can talk to. Um, you can talk to me, you can talk to Michael, you can talk to anyone, you know, just ask and ask the questions, but please get vaccinated. It's, it's really the only thing that's going to get us through this time.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Great. So we've come to the close of this part of the um, forum today. We have an opportunity for both of our candidates for Board Six to give some closing statements and we will start with Eve Mason Marcus.
Thank you again to Bellingham City Club, to Christine, Robert, everyone for having us here today. It's been a pleasure to speak with you all. As someone who has been on the ground in Bellingham for several years, working with the Waukesha Human Rights Task Force, Bellingham Unity Committee, Richard Food Desert Fighters, People for Spelling Ham and many others, I am in tune with the issues that our community faces today. I also see the strength and resiliency of our neighbors and how they care for one another through mutual aid, direct action, community spaces and collective care. I'm here today because I believe Bellingham can be a leader in creating permanent affordable housing and adjust transition towards renewable energy and green jobs and creating a more walkable and rollable city and developing intersectional and anti-racist policies. Collectively, we have the resource to ensure everyone has what they need to feel safe and secure. As a teacher and an artist, I often have to think on my feet and get creative when problem solving. The status quo isn't working for so many of us and I am excited to bring a different perspective with community oriented solutions to the challenges we face. I'm an effective leader who values clear communication, collaborative relationships, creative policy and celebrates community. I don't have all the answers, but I know that our community does. Co-founder and dear friend of the Waukesha Racial Equity Commission, Su Ling Zhao often says, those that are closest to the problems are also closest to the solutions. Together, we must act with urgency to ensure a lasting future for everyone. You can learn more about my campaign and connect with me online at electsmasonmarcus.com, S M A S O N M A R C U S. I welcome any questions or discussion you would like to engage in. Please vote Eve Mason Marcus for Bellingham City Council, Ward Six.
Thank you. Closing remarks, Michael Illiquist.
Okay. Well, first of all, um, thank you, Eve, for, for being here. And I want to thank also the city club and each of you attending today for caring about this election and for the future of our city. Governing well is not easy. It takes time and energy and thought. And that is what I have given and will continue to give. Because of this, I've earned the endorsement of my fellow city council members, both past and present, and the mayor and past mayors and the county executive and both state representatives for the 40th Legislative District. I'm endorsed by organized labor and leading environmental groups and the Democratic Party is about the 40th and 42nd Legislative Districts, as well as the sole endorsement of both the Democratic Women's Group and the Young Democrats of Western Washington University. One of the important lessons I've learned is that creating progress means recognizing when issues are complex. And that building consensus requires an understanding of other people's values, concerns as well as our own. Being a public service servant, I understand that it takes all voices and all perspectives, not just our own or the voice of people we know and agree with. Democracy can be messy, but it is vital. We can and we have stepped up to the challenges. If re-elected, I will continue to work hard to support programs and policies that work while championing new ideas, where and when we need to do more or do it better. I ask for your support and your vote. Thank you.
Great. Thank you to both of you for being here today and giving us opportunity to get to know a little bit more about your positions and ideas. So thank you. We're going to transition now to our candidates from the at-large, uh, at-large race.
Thank you.
I believe we will be shortly spotlighting our candidates. We have Christina Michelle Martins, who is facing off against Russ Widby today. So thank you for joining us this afternoon. We're going to have the same format. It's, it's quick and we're going to launch in uh, in alphabetical order with introductory statements. We'll start with Christina Michelle Martins. You may begin.
Thank you so much, City Club, for organizing this. Thank you for everyone who's been attendance for caring about what is happening in your local government. My name is Christina Michelle Martins and I'm running for the at-large position on Bellingham City Council. The events of 2020 hit everyone very hard and changed the world as we knew it. They spurred me into action as an activist here locally in our community. And after spending much of my life wanting to see a positive change in our nation, for those of us who are most marginalized, I realized that I needed to be the change I wanted to see. The people closest to the problems are closest to the solutions and we are severely under utilizing our most abundant resource, we the people. We can fight for governance of love and abundance where everyone has food, shelter and dignity. For too long, policy has been made for and by the people with power. My number one goal is to bring transparency, clarity, accountability and collaboration to how all government processes work. There seems to be a large disconnect between what our local government is trying to accomplish and how the community perceives the work that is being done. There also seems to be a duplication of services in some government departments, which I believe can be streamlined, therefore freeing up resources to be utilized in a more efficient manner. We are also all very aware that Bellingham is growing at an unprecedented rate. And now is the time for our community to be engaged in a conversation of what we want Bellingham to look like in 25 years. We need some serious imagination to bring forward bold ideas on how to make our community as welcoming, inclusive as possible as we grow, while still addressing our two most pressing issues, climate change and the homeless population crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Russ Widby, will you please share your introductory statements?
Thank you, Christine. Yes, my name is Russ Widby and I'm running for city council at large position here in Bellingham. I'm a longtime Bellingham resident and here 40 years from Brooklyn, New York. And this is home. Along with that, I want to say that I am doing everything in my power to make this a more inclusive place. My very being here in, in this community has done that. Uh, for a long time, what I've done is welcome people of different backgrounds, those who are black, indigenous and people of color. I ran into an organization called Basal, Brothers and Sisters of Waukesha. Essentially, I was known as the black mayor of Bellingham. I still carry that title and welcome people to this community. One of the things I'm more passionate about now is from coming behind the curtain and going out in public and making that notion that everyone can be successful here in Waukesha County. The key thing is this, I think that one of the things, once many, what we can do is continue to challenge ourselves. Waukesha County is a welcoming community. I know at times it seems like hmm, the odds are against those who are different. But I'm here to say that if you apply yourself and have the right attitude and develop the right friendships and just the fortitude, it can be done. There are opportunities here and take it full advantage of them. And so I'm looking forward to do that as a council person to represent here in Waukesha County.
Thank you. So again, we're alternating and we'll begin again with Russ Widby. What do you think the biggest challenge facing the city of Bellingham and how do you plan to address it?
As I go around the community, listening to people, I'm hearing more and more about public safety. Many in the community are saying that they don't feel as comfortable going downtown, for instance. I'm hearing many businesses wanting to hire private security to protect their downtown businesses. We are having some, some challenges of people uh, just feeling safe. And so that's why I'm one who will say that I think public safety, whether it be policing or reimagined policing or community policing and depending upon our police and fire to step up and support them financially to make sure they can do their jobs or our community can feel safe. The other thing I think that is a concern is housing options, right? We are facing a tremendous homeless population and I think that's nationwide. So we're going to have to get real creative and work as a team with local, our state, federal and even the port in Waukesha County to join in to say, we've all got to come to the table and begin the solutions together and get uh, ideas. Cause I think the main ideas are right here in Waukesha County. And if we need additional assistance, we know that our federal, state, county and uh, uh, partners are there to help us. But we're just going to have to get real creative and do things differently than we have ever before.
Thank you. Christina Michelle Martins, what do you think the big challenges are facing the city of Bellingham and how do you plan to address them?
I, I think that being prepared to move forward effectively in the future is the biggest issue facing our city. The last time the Bellingham City uh, Council Charter was updated was 1986 when they added, they went from six council members to seven council members. Um, and as of right now, all of our council members who are serving on paper are committing only 20 hours of work a week. They are not doing that. I know firsthand that on an, on a light week, it's 30 hours. They're, um, especially during COVID, we're putting more like 50 to 60 hours in to the job. And we need to recognize that the secret's out about Bellingham. There are people coming every single day and they all have different needs than um, the population that has been here for so long. And if we cannot arm the people who are making the choices and putting in the time and effort to really get the opinions from all the people who will be impacted by the decisions our government is making, then we will be in the cycle of always being one to two steps behind of what we actually need to be doing on the ground and how we should be serving our community in its entirety. So really accepting that we, we have to make changes and we have to treat our, our city council like they are doing hard work because they are, we have to acknowledge it, we have to respect it. And I think we have to get them more help and that comes with expanding.
Thank you. I want to remind the audience that the Q and A function is open and you may have different questions for this set of candidates. So please enter your questions in the Q and A. Uh, we have a few more questions from our program committee and then we'll transition over to audience Q and A. Okay. This next question, we'll start with Christina Michelle Martins. Some days it seems as if there are apartments going up all over Bellingham, yet the availability of single-family housing is extremely limited. How would you handle the city's growth without destroying the qualities that make everyone want to live here?
Absolutely. And this is one of the toughest uh, conversations to have. What do we do? Um, which is just always going to be an answer in process. I would say that by looking at the apartment buildings that have gone up on the waterfront and in Fairhaven, even though we're building more units, they are completely out of touch with what people who are currently living in Bellingham can afford to spend. So I think that we really need to examine our current zoning laws and see where we can do as much as possible to um, use the infill toolkits to get more diverse in, in what we are putting up, who we expect to be living in them, what we expect them to be able to afford in this current climate and um, economic period right after COVID. And really understand that everyone deserves to have a roof over their head. And even though we are such a mecca for people who are able to work from home, doing their job wherever they please. Um, and a lot of out of state money is coming in to buy up available properties. We have people here that are in desperate need that have been in the community for so long. And um, as we've seen from the Waukesha Health Board report on COVID, we are about to see a 77% increase in homeless families in Waukesha County. So really having that on the top of our minds, we can't just build to build. We have to build to support our community.
Thank you. Uh, Russ Widby, same question. Uh, some days it seems as if there are apartments going up all over Bellingham, but the availability of single-family housing is extremely limited. How would you handle the city's growth without destroying the qualities that make everyone want to live here?
One of the things that I'm doing is, uh, if you want to call it that, going on tour with the neighborhood associations. Uh, just to listen and hear what their concerns are in various neighborhoods. Um, each neighborhood has its own characteristic. Um, Columbia is different from Birchwood or Edgemore or South Hill. Um, so you have to go around and I've been going around to hear their concerns and what their issues are about their own neighborhood. Uh, I also support uh, just the concept of this land trust, like Culture Community to Land Trust, which has been around for a number of years in supporting that effort of, of affordable housing and helping people in this regard. Uh, I also went uh, on tour, if you will, to Happy Valley, which I want to make a distinction because I was educated, even though I've been here a long time. Happy Valley is separate or different than the neighborhood of Fairhaven. Um, so just want to put that out there for Wendy and Alex McLean. Thank you for that education. Um, so just want to put that out there for Wendy and Alex McLean. Thank you for that education. Um, but in that tour, there was co-housing available. I think people would do a good service to go look at Happy Valley because they've been somehow able to, if you will, do a microcosm of what I think we could learn for the greater Bellingham area. So that might be something as well. And working with some of our state legislators, like Alex Ramel, who's putting forth some other opportunities in land trust and hopefully with uh, our current port executives, um, Shepherd and and Briscoe. So there's some things we can do to help out there.
Okay. Uh, Russ Woodby, I'll start the next question again with you. Um, both of you are, I believe, are new to public office, so voters might be unfamiliar with your positions on issues. Both of your websites list affordable housing, homelessness, and environment as major areas of interest. What are ways that you differ from your opponent on these issues?
On those particular issues you uh, listed? I can't, I can't say I know all of Christina's positions in those areas, so I have to speak towards uh, mine selfishly. I apologize for that. Um, but I I think I differ in the aspect possibly, or I'll just speak to my issues. I really value, as I just stated, going around and listening to different options of what we can do. Uh, there are people who have been here a shorter period of time than myself and a longer period of time myself. So I really value going around and listening to what their ideas are. Uh, especially as it comes to environmental issues, uh, you know, and 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 concerns about what they think or where we should go as far as Bellingham going forward. Uh, because they have a vested interest, just as I do, and I'm sure just as Christina does. But they have a vested interest in this space we call home, and they want to see it be successful and make sure that we're doing this for the long haul. So I think one of the things is, as as pertains to um, housing again, is that I think we're gonna have to think um, differently. Now, when I say this, I'll use myself as it pertains to ADUs, not as a profit center, and that could be, but I'm doing it for uh, the issue of taking care of my mom to save me two hundred miles of driving to Seattle. Putting a little twelve hundred square foot spot on the lot, um, and having her closer to me. So that's important.
Thank you. Uh, Christina, would you like me to repeat the question? It was a long one.
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, both of you candidates are new to public office, so voters might be unfamiliar with your positions. Both of your websites list affordable housing, homelessness, and environment as major areas of interest. What are ways that you differ from your opponent on these issues?
I would say across all three, and this probably has something to do generationally. I I want to dive in immediately. I want to start making progress as soon as possible. I absolutely um, have been doing the same. I've had hundreds of conversations with uh, phone calls and being outdoor knocking, listening to the community. And at a certain point, they are all saying, we've said this all before. So really taking the data that we have already collected and what I've found in the Pacific Northwest is that we're afraid to get it wrong, so we don't actually start anything. And really just understand that as um, government leaders, we we have to pick one point and start moving in that direction. And as we are looking at the next generation coming behind us, everything is failing them. Everything is crumbling and falling down around. So everything is at the utmost urgency, and we just need to move more quickly. And we also have to really be looking to um, officials and experts in every single field, bring as many of them as possible to all of these conversations to make sure that we're getting as much detailed information um, at an official level and just start plowing through all of it. Um, like uh, Eve Sames and Marcus said, we've had a climate action plan for how long? And we've been able to deliver on it, maybe about twelve of those so far. So we've got the information, we've just got to get out there and do it, and time is of the essence.
Thank you. You'll be up first for this next question as well. As COVID infections climb and federal support for pandemic relief for small businesses seems to be waning, there is concern that local businesses in the downtown core will struggle to survive. What are your plans to return downtown Bellingham to a vibrant marketplace that it was growing into before the pandemic?
Absolutely, and tailored into that as um, everything is always all connected. A a big issue for downtown businesses are also the ability to staff right now. And a huge issue with being able to staff is the staff having um, a place that they can live and afford. So right there, those two things I think are coupled until the end. And there are a lot of uh, national and state grants available, but there is not a real touch point for local businesses to get um, hands-on help from people who speak the language and the jargon of all of these grant opportunities coming forward. And so being able to create a hub um, for anyone who needs help and partnering them with someone who can help them through the paperwork, who can bring to light opportunities that are available that they maybe have not seen before and can really help them finish it all to the end. The businesses are already struggling, they're overwhelmed, they are worrying twenty-four seven. So to be able to have a professional come in and assist them and take some of the weight off their shoulders, I think is the best thing that we can be doing.
Thank you. So Russ Woodby, it's your turn. Um, as COVID infections climb and federal support for pandemic relief for small businesses wanes, there's a concern that local businesses in the downtown core will struggle to survive. What are your plans to return downtown Bellingham to the vibrant marketplace that it was growing into before the pandemic?
I I guess I'd start with the action that the city has already taken through our federal partner. About five hundred thousand dollars was given from the city, from the federal to the city, to downtown businesses uh, through the CARES Act. I certainly would be uh, selected uh, taking the initiative to be requesting more dollars uh, from our federal partners to revitalize and help out our downtown core businesses. Uh, a- and the other thing I I would say that might help the businesses as well, we have to figure out the issue where I'm hearing, once again, downtown businesses taking out private security. Uh, that's an expense to them, and they need revenue, right? As an accountant, uh, that's what, and a financial advisor, that's what I'm more focused on. They need revenue and not expenses. So when I hear the fact that uh, businesses downtown are looking at hiring private security, then that that's an expense for them. And that, what about those businesses that can't afford to pay that fee for private security? So that concern has been about more expenses. So on the revenue side, I would say the fact that we need more dollars coming from the federal government and maybe the city looking at some initiatives. Um, but certainly, uh, the CARES Act did help. I think most of those downtown businesses would agree. And we need more of that to come forth for the the coming years.
Thank you. So we'll start, I guess we're back with you, Russ Woodby. Um, the last eighteen months of pandemic have made the mental health crisis more visible. How do you suggest that we adjust the city's approach to this issue?
That's a tough one. Thanks, Christine, and then thanks to the audience for these tough questions, man. Huh, I I I don't know exactly, but I'll say this, I am, are gonna have to depend on our uh, our partner, uh, and that would be the Watcom County Health Department, because essentially uh, the city, we don't have a health department, so we're gonna have to rely on our friends over there uh, to help us with that. Um, I know I would like to see a broader vision in the aspect that we're gonna be needing more mental health professionals and having to train more mental health professionals. I'd like to see, and neither of these institutions knows this, so I'm going out on a limb here, Christine. I'd like to see more initiatives towards curriculum changes at both institutions where I teach at, and that's Watcom Community College and BTC, Bellingham Technical College. I'd like to see them possibly develop uh, some curriculum around mental health professionals in that regard. Because I think, and I may be wrong in this, more and more as we look towards the future, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to beef up that area. Because for so long, there's been a tremendous deficit. And so I don't know as a council person I can do, but I will certainly be sounding the horn for more professionals in that area. Uh, and maybe we can start to talk curriculum uh, to Vice Presidents of Instruction at both those institutions to help. But for now, we'll have to rely on our good friends at the Watcom County Health Department to carry the load there.
Okay. Christina Michelle Martins, uh, as I said, the last eighteen months of pandemic have made mental health crises more visible. How do you suggest we adjust the city's approach to this issue?
Um, absolutely, thank you. Not only has mental health been a drain on everyone, but there's also quite the disparity between our BIPOC community members getting mental health that they feel like really supports them. Um, it, because that's a very specific niche in in dealing with that, the other, and all the intersectionalities that come with being a person of color and also going through um, COVID and all of what was twenty-twenty. Um, so I would love to see us get more diverse practitioners up here. And to do that, we really need to invest in those jobs like we want them here, like we want them to say, to say, like we think they're a valuable part of the community and that they are serving the community um, in such a specific way, mental health stability for all of us would just move us forward as such an amazing community. Um, and in the conversations I've had with um, past and current mental health workers here in Bellingham and Watcom County, um, it's it's the lack of support, it's the lack of pay, it's the lack of being able to afford to stay here. So really, a dr- really coming to terms with ourselves as a community, if this is something that we value, how much do we value it? How desperately do we need it? And what are we willing to contribute to making sure that all community members feel like they have a safe space to talk about what is going on with their lives?
Thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to Maureen McCarthy to field some questions from the audience. And we'll start with Christina Michelle Martins.
All right, thank you, Christine. The question is, are parks and recreation sites are being used more and more by people from di- from different ethnic groups, and yet our Parks and Rec Advisory Board has no ethnic representation on it? How would you hope to change that?
I, and I would say that a lot of our advisory boards and departments don't have a lot of representation from people of color, which is one of the very reasons I am running for city council. Um, and I would like to say that I believe I'm actually already working on that with the Watcom Racial Equity Commission, with my co-founder Su Ling Zhao and uh, the support of the Chocanat Health Foundation. Um, we want to be looking at all government departments. And we, as a community, as a nation, have said out loud, especially over twenty-twenty, um, that diversity is key and that all so many companies and and government departments uh, respect and encourage diversity. I can't have you just say it, though. I need you to to be showing it. I need you to be engaging in it. I need you to prove to us that diversity is key. And therefore, really looking for um, diverse participants on all boards in all levels of government. Uh, I myself was called by a lot of sitting city and uh, county council members last year after the murder of George Floyd. And so they they want to get it right. They they want to be, they want to make sure that people of color are engaging in these conversations. But we also have to open the door for them to be part of these actual career options and letting people of color know that this is something that they can do as well.
Thank you, thank you. And Russ, would be the same question to you. Our parks and recreation sites are being used more and more by people of di- different ethnic groups, yet our parts and Parks and Rec Advisory Board has no ethnic representation on it. What would you do to help address this?
That's a good question. Well, I I go back to what uh, my basis is and what I've been doing here for thirty years, right? And that is uh, serving a diverse community. I would let this be known at the organization which I represent called Basal, we'll call it Basal two point O, Brothers and Sisters of Watcom. And a part of the proceeds that hopefully be left over after election, I'll be developing a PAC, Political Action Committee, to encourage people of color to be running for public office, be serving on advisory boards, be serving on the Board of Equalization, and to be getting involved, because I have direct access to those individuals. And uh, what we sometimes call the uh, Black Man or Black Country Club, that'll be happening at the barber shop. That's where it all goes down. At Busy Bee's Barber Shop, and we'll be conducting things in this regard to be sharing these efforts to get people more specifically involved, who look like me and who are black indigenous, people of color. So I'll just take the action to where I've always done, making an impact behind the scenes. So that's what we'll do and we'll encourage. And better yet, what we'll do is make funding available so that when people sign up who look like me to run for office, they're not shocked by the cost it takes to be involved. In the case of advisory boards, it's a real effective cost, but when it comes to running for public office, they need some seed money to get going. It is very cost prohibitive for people of color that I've found in the city to run for office, because the thing that holds them back is money.
Thank you. And this one's coming right back to you, Russ Woodby. Uh, this question will sound familiar, but it was asked specifically of the both of you as well. What is your position on the four parts of the People First Initiative? And as a reminder, those are renter protections, invasive policing, right to organize, and workers' rights.
I think generally speaking, generally speaking, Maureen, I I I agree with the conceptual. I will say with uh, with something similar to Michael Lilquist saying the fact earlier, I'm just concerned about, will there be some challenges in in some of these things? Uh, from a legal standpoint, I'm just worried about the city having to possibly defend it. Um, as it pertains to the what the first one, uh, uh, the four you're saying is, I'm I'm just concerned how it's written. Uh, I'm sure as Eve said, that they looked at various cities to defend it. But I'm just nervous about the positions um, and making sure that it's not gonna fall upon the city council to defend some of these positions uh, or the legal department at the city to defend some of these positions. I think I I'm, on the one, I think I'm more comfortable with the ones for renters because we have some things in place already to help with renters. Not on a legislative, but maybe a legislative state position, we can't do rent control. But I think we have some things in place already at the city to help in that regard. Um, as it pertains to what number two, the uh, police uh, facial recognition and uh, that's another one that I kind of am concerned about. Uh, one, I want to protect, to preserve, but I also understand that we want to make sure that if it's gonna be implemented here, uh, that we make sure we have uh, policies in place to make sure we don't do racial profiling with our law enforcement, using it in a wrong way. So I want to make sure we have an advisory board to help with that. Oh, I didn't see the stop sign.
Thank you. Okay, very good. I'm glad you saw.
So I apologize for that.
All right, and to you, Christina Michelle Martins, what is your position on the four parts of the People First Initiative? And again, those are renter protections, invasive policing, right to organize, and workers' rights.
Yes, to all. Um, as we, or as I believe, again, a lot of the laws that we are governed by, um, and that are set in place about specific groups of people like uh, workers and um, unions. Not a lot of the people who are in the job get to contribute a lot to that conversation. And I love the time and place that we live in now, where it is um, not easy but more feasible for the community to come together, agree on four things that they want to see um, and institute. And as Eve said, over nine thousand people signed every single initiative. Those are community members on the ground. So even the twenty to thirty um, brainpower trust that put all of these together, so much of our community also agrees, and that's what they want to see. And again, being from the younger generation, I am so for the people. I want to support what they want to do. And I see value in all four of these, and I I want to help usher forth exactly what our community wants to see as we um, move towards the future.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna jump back in with one final question for you both before we get to uh, closing statements. Um, we'll start with E, uh, excuse me, with Christina Michelle Martins. Um, there are projections that Washington State will become a major draw for climate refugees from around the world. How can the city of Bellingham prepare for this eventuality?
Sorry, I had a little hiccup.
Okay.
Yeah, it's ready to go. I think that we need to be on the ground communicating with any and everyone who has space to be able to help support these families as they transition into our communities. I would love to work with all of our nonprofits and see what they can contribute to that specific demographic. I would definitely like to make sure that we have and are including in the conversation people from each individual ethnic group that are already here that can help the transition. There's a lot of conversations about Black people that are happening without them in the room and coming to solutions without them being able to have a voice in it. So I want to make sure that we're not putting that on any other group. If you are not from a specific group, you don't know what their actual needs are. You, you are not really aware of what they've seen, what they've been through. And it's really hard to accept authentic support from someone who's never walked in your shoes. So making sure that we are able to set up communities of support around all of these families and individuals. So it's not such a culture shock when they get here and they really feel at home and accepted and have all the resources available to them that they are going to need in this awful and on their part heroic transition of moving to an entirely new country and starting over from the ground up.
Thank you. Russ Wouldbe, there are projections that Washington State will become a major draw for climate refugees from around the world. How can the city of Bellingham prepare for this eventuality?
That's a pretty amazing, as you think about just taking the pause and take that in. But I'm going to go back to the fundamentals. You know, increasing affordability for housing, infrastructure and creating livable wage, livable wage jobs. I think that's going to help that transition. Believe it or not, working with either our county farmers or either our in-town organic farmers, if you will, working with organizations that can provide local food security, like the Birchwood Food Desert Fighters in the Birchwood area. And that, that's going to be important for that transition, I believe. And, and other thing is the fact that we're going to have to create, and, and I think we'll continue to this. At Basal, we'll continue to, if we call, as we call the welcome wagon, we'll continue to that for those who are coming. I don't know if we'll be able to do that to scale and scope that you're suggesting, but we'll do our small part to make them feel welcome. And that's more of a, just a general thing. I think as a city, we're going to have to work, I keep saying it back with the, the port, the county and, and federal partners to help this endeavor. Because I don't know if we can do that all on the city budget. And maybe even look to some private partnerships, you know, like the Chamber of Commerce, maybe even look to them for public-private partnerships.
Okay, thank you. So we're now at the point of asking you for closing statements. We will start with Russ Wouldbe.
Well, thank you, Christine, and thanks to the organization of City Club. It's always been missed being there in person, but we have a, a bigger task in front of us. So I just want to say, it, it's, it's a humbling pleasure to run for city council at large. It takes a lot of hours and dedication and it takes a lot of, and meeting a lot of people and hearing a lot of different thoughts, thoughts of things of, you know, I've never considered before. But I will say this, I'm dedicated, I'm willing to work hard, I'm willing to be a workhorse for the city of Bellingham and give back to this city and community that's blessed me. I think the fact that, that City Club has always been an area where you can express and hear different thoughts. And I think you're still doing that, even if it is not having a wonderful lunch and online and looking in the squares. So I'm just excited to ask for the aspect of all voters to consider me and vote for myself as city council at large member. And I will continue to work hard for Bellingham residents. And I'm looking forward to serving this community with all I have to give. So that's what it is for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will finish up today with closing statements from Christina Michelle Martins.
Thank you again for everyone who contributed to making this a possibility, for giving us this time and a platform to share our thoughts. I want to say that in no particular order, I stand for the Climate Action Plan, Gun Violence Prevention, Reproductive Freedom, including access to abortion, Universal Healthcare, Unionizing Renters' Rights, Water Adjudication, All COVID Economic Relief Available, Better Access to High Quality and Affordable Childcare, Multifamily Zoning, Reallocating Police Funds to Invest in Upstream and Groundwater Work So We Can Try to End the Cycle of Poverty, More Low Barrier and No Barrier Shelters In An Effort To Abolish Our Emergency Winter Shelter Group Which Has To Come Together Every Year, Even Though We Know It's Going To Be An Issue. We need people to hold our elected officials accountable and continuing to discuss the solutions for our community that actually work for the people facing the problems and invest in these issues like we want to solve them. We need to invest in our houseless population like we want to help them. We need to invest in all of our children like they matter regardless of their race and economic status like we value them and provide them with a great foundation to be the best they can be. And we need to explore low-income housing and multifamily zoning pursuits as if the soul of our community depends on it, because it does. I know we can do this. And when we do, Bellinghamsters will march proudly into the future as an example of how a community can come together and grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank all of our audience for joining us here today. If you were here and like what you heard and want to share that with your neighbors and family members, it has been recorded and will be, a link will be made available on the Bellingham City Club website. I am grateful for the questions that chose to shed light, not heat, on these issues and candidates. And I'd love to thank all of the candidates, our at-large position candidates, Christina Michelle Martins and Russ Wouldbe, and our Ward Six candidates, Michael Lilquist and Eve Samason Marcus, excuse me, I was trying so hard to pronounce the S. Thank you all for being here today. I appreciate your time and have a good afternoon. Bye now.